I'll call the Order of City Council Meeting for the CDV's Grand Forks for September 5th, 2023. Would the City Clerk please call roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Fetter.
Here.
Ben Pakshavinsky.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does determine a quorum. First we're going to have an Honor Flight presentation to include Pledge of Allegiance. This presentation will be conducted by Don Roberts, Honor Flight Organizer, Peggy Vanial, Daughters of the American Revolution, Delane Dell Hirschman, Honor Flight Volunteer, and Warren Strindell, April 2022 Honor Flight Participant. So if you guys want to come up and give your presentation, appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm with the Honor Flight. I was in the Marine Corps for 20 years. So the biggest thing is we're all volunteers and our mission is to send veterans to Washington, DC. All expense paid and we've sent about 2,000 vets so far out of Fargo. Last year we had the first flight out of Grand Forks. We raised enough money through the merchants of our northern Minnesota, North Dakota that we got a flight out of Grand Forks. The people that came down that day were impressed that we had a good airport. They thought we were in Hick Country. So anyway, just some of the things. We'll go through each part of the three-day, two-night adventure for these veterans. Most of us are in our 90s and 80s. So we are going to need help when we're at the airport, from the airport on to the, when you come home. Going to the airport, we had about 25 police and sheriff's cars to welcome these people. We had 50 motorcycles with all the flags on them that morning. We had free parking. The airport gave us free parking. Inside the airport was all red, white, and blue balloons decorating it. We had 50, we take 50 wheelchairs on the flight. So if anybody needs help, my daughter was on that part and she'll explain part of it. We had the recruiters from the Marine Corps and Air Force out opening the doors as these veterans got out. We had golf carts bringing from the free parking lot. We had the DAV welcoming. We had a free breakfast. This year we've got 120 vets going out at the airport on the 15th of October. They come back on the 17th of October. On the airplane as they're going out, there'll be water cannons honoring these people. The fire department will have the honor, be blowing water over the top of them for the three days of fun and activity. So Peggy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and guests. I'm Peggy Vanial. I'm with Progress Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution in Grand Forks. Last year it was our pleasure to, and honor, to help Don with the Honor Flight last year. And what we did, we, pre-flight, we did the, we served cookies, we helped the veterans, whatever they needed to do. And it was just a rewarding experience for us. On the day of the, when they, day of departure, when we were out there, like Don was saying, there was, you know, the fire trucks, the motorcycles, all the DAV organizations that were out there. And when they, when the veterans came to depart, you know, they couldn't believe all the activity with those out there for them. And, you know, and just like all the excitement and everything. So it rubs off on you. So you're excited. And so they were just simply believed that they're actually going on this flight. And the welcome home celebration, I believe you were out there, Mr. Mayor, was amazing. We did the, like you said, the red, white, and blue, all the, everything was patriotic. And so when they came home, the veterans, and they started stepping off that plane, Mayor Gander and Mayor Pakshavinsky were there to welcome them home and shake their hands and say, welcome home. But it was all the patriotic music, the cheers, the crowds from East Grand Forks and Grand Forks that they were there. And so, but on this next Honor Flight, we would like to invite you to help support. We need your support for the volunteers who need assistance and to help make this another successful event. So I encourage you to, you know, to support. And then when you see a veteran, thank a veteran, thank them for their service and say, welcome home. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Delaney Hirschman. Dad, our Don is my dad and my mother. And I'm actually a 1979 graduate from Eastside with, with Steve there. I was one of the volunteers that got to go on, actually two flights now. There's a lot that we do. But we want to make sure that the veterans are well taken care of, from whether it's helping them on and off the buses, helping to make sure they have coats, finding their rooms when we get the hotels, making sure they have the wheelchair assistance. Once we get to a place and there, if someone doesn't need a wheelchair, we take a wheelchair out empty, whether it has even bottled water in it, you know, for them if they need it. Or if somebody gets out there and they decide, hey, I can't make it. So we make sure that we have a wheelchair wandering around, taking care of them. With my first flight, we, I ended up working with one of our local veterans here and I was pushing him throughout the whole entire trip. When we came back, he happened to be over here at the VFW for burgers. And as I walked in, he's sitting there going to his family. That's my pusher. That's my pusher. I've never had, I don't even know if he knows my name, but, you know. On my second trip, I ended up, you know, helping very many different people with pushing and going around. On the very last day, one of the gentlemen on my bus said, I just can't do it. He goes, and I said, find a chair, let's go. So that's what we did. And he was, he was a pretty good-sized guy. We went with one of his friends and then the veteran's daughter was with us. It was the four of us. We went over to the Korean Memorial. We went over to see Lincoln Memorial. We got over to the Vietnam Memorial. He had two names that he wanted to go up and trace that's on the wall. Well, we, he had the numbers where these names are located. We got to the place. Well, of course, it's way down on the bottom. I told him, hey, if you sit there, you hold the paper, I'll get down and I will start tracing. Once we have traced it, and I came back up and gave it to him, the tears from both him and I came out. It was such an honor to be able to do that with a veteran. But now here's the fun part about it. As I turned around, another gentleman walks in, traces that same name. Here to come find out that these two gentlemen had this guy that was on the wall that was his barber's. I mean, it was just unbelievable that you could have such a coincidence of so many different names on a wall and two people have the same person that they traced. As a veteran, as a volunteer, again, we do so much with the veterans to make sure that every need is taken care of. And to make sure that they have fun. And to make sure that we have fun. And like they say, it is a trip of a lifetime for all of them and for all of us volunteers.
I was honored and privileged to be a part of the April 2022 Honor Flight. On that trip, there were 84 vets on the 183 passenger airplane. Four of those vets were from World War II, seven from the Korean War, and nine from the Vietnam Era. The trip was over three days and two nights. Everything on Honor Flight says, Don has said, is provided. That includes, of course, the flight and the hotel trips and the meals and the bus trip all around the Washington and such. And our group had 85 volunteers, more than you did. And that was, everybody was, you couldn't step off the bus without somebody saying, you want a ride? You want a ride? They had wheelchairs. There, I think there were 80 wheelchairs in that group. And also on the trip were about 15 doctors, nurses, and other organizational staff. So that's, we got to the 183. Anyway, in Washington, we had, we were driven past the Capitol and the White House and had stopped at such places as the Fort McHenry National Monument. That's where the Star Spangled Banner was written during the War of 1812. We watched the changing of the guard at the Arlington National Cemetery. It's quite a sight. And we had stopped at the Iwo Jima, the Franklin Delano Roosevelt Air Force, the Lincoln, Korean, Vietnam, World War I and World War II memorials. We also visited the National Archives. That's where you could see under glass the original Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. I was able to find Cliff Cushman's name on the big wall at the 625-acre Arlington National Cemetery. There, the graves of over 400,000 US servicemen and women are maintained there, seeing all those white grave markers in some places almost as far as you could see. It was very humbling, sobering sight. In addition to the thoughts that I had about the soldiers buried there, were about all of the girlfriends, the wives, the children, the parents, brothers, sisters, and friends of those vets. It was tear-jerking time. The statement, free is not free, is really hit home about that time. And I'm sure it was felt even more by those vets who had actually seen service on the front lines during these wars. I wasn't ever any involved like that, but I can just imagine those people. Anyway, on a little lighter note, while we were moving around the city, I know buses, there were four buses that took our group. We had doctors and nurses on everyone and such. Anyway, one of us stops, well, as we drove by a construction site, our bus driver, Eddie, pointed out that there was a porta potty sitting there. And he said that a Marine on one of the earlier trips had, had given that porta potty a name. He called it the Jane Fonda Memorial. And he said further, this Marine office said further, that if anybody wanted to leave a deposit there, they could. For me, the trip was always, has always been among my most enjoyable, best-ever experiences. By the time it ended, being, although being far too old for it to happen, I was about ready to re-up. Thank you.
We said that it was a three-day, two-night deal. We got banquets at night, served with bow ties. Hotels are excellent. Breakfast is served with bow ties and everything set it down. We got anything you wanted to have to eat. One thing that impressed me is the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. I was there in 2017. We flew out of Fargo. And when I got back, I decided I need to get the veterans from up north. We were, maybe six of us going at one time from northern Minnesota, North Dakota, all the way to the Canadian border. Now we've got 120 going this time. So we've raised some money. And why we've done this, I've been out bumming since everybody seems to know me now. Coming home, there'll be a band, excuse me. The city band will be there, the police department. And as the airplane's coming in, they tilt it. And when you got all the blue and red lights, it really impressed the people on this airplane that we can do this in Grand Forks. So on the 24th of this month, we're going to be at the Legion. And that's when they get their shirts, their jackets. The Red River Valley Motorcycle donated $58,000 by selling tickets to all you people. And this year, we're going to have individual bags that we're passing out to. Just some of the things we do. On the airplane coming back, I would like to have, we had 500 out there last year. I'd like to have 1,000 out there welcoming these vets home. These are our heroes and we need to honor them. Because we sure the hell didn't have them when we came home in the 50s and 60s. So anyway, is there any questions that I could answer?
I don't think so. I think you explained it pretty well.
Guys, if I could, thanks for giving me the honor of being with you as you returned. And if I can be excused from the Tuesday council meeting on the 17th or any part of it, I'll be back again. And it's one of the most moving, one of the most patriotic things that I did in the last year. And thanks for the privilege of being part of it. Appreciate it.
We need everybody out there, just to see how important it is to welcome these veterans home. We're going to have the pleasure of the Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
I've had my meeting for the day.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Hey, Don, I just want to tell you, I have a driver that's, that drives for me that's going on this next trip.
Good. I'll be over to see you. Don't worry.
And that's all he talks about. He's so excited to get going on that.
Well, we've got about a 700 waiting list after this flight. So we are, and there's a lot of them from up north. I sent letters to every veterans organization, Eagles, from here to the Canadian border. We've raised a lot of money. And we're going to keep doing it till we get every vet. There's a World War II going on this next flight. So anyway.
One other thing, and they were mentioning on that Tuesday when we return home. The news, they'll be with us.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the open forum and obturning from members of the public to address City Council on items not on current agenda. Items requiring council action will be reported to staff, boards, or commissions for research and future councils' agendas as appropriate. I do not see anybody here. Move on to approval minutes for the August 15th council meeting summary, August 15th closed meeting and minutes of the 22nd work session and the minute summary of the 22nd closed meeting. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Schedule of bidlettings, there is none. Schedule of public carings, there is none. Move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted. One motion, however, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and actions if they choose. Anyone want five through eight pulled? Not entertain a motion, five through eight, please. Move. Move by Fetter.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Acknowledged, received of reports of officers, boards, and commissions. Regular meeting minutes of Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission for August 2nd, 2023. Communication, reminder that Seventh Annual City Showcase will be taking place by Restaurant Row from 5:00 to 7:00 on Wednesday, September 6th, tomorrow. Anybody else want to add anything to that? Chief, you want to add anything to that at all?
Thank you very much. This is shaping up to be our biggest and best ever of the city showcases. We've got more people that are going to be there than ever before. So even that much more information, more things to see and to do when you're out there. So we encourage anybody in East Grand Forks or the surrounding area to come out. Organizations from, obviously mostly from East Grand Forks, but also from throughout the surrounding area as well. It should be a good evening. It's supposed to be beautiful tomorrow night. So, thank you.
If you want, yes, it'd be nice.
Yeah, what am I serving today?
All right. Thank you, sir. I'll move on to old business. Consider adopting ordinance number 39, fourth series, amending city code entitled General Regulations by revoking weeds section 98.35 and amending replacing section 98.35 weeds with following and by adopting by reference code title 1 and section 10.99, which, among other things, contain penalty provisions. This is the second reading. Move. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Fetter. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to new business. Consider proving the loan agreement from Hawks Manufacturing for $49,000 at 1% for 10-year term. Is there a motion?
Move.
Move by Mr. Helms?
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 13, consider proving the memorandum of agreement between City East Grand Forks and the Law Enforcement Labor Services, number 152, for the adjustment of wages of officer Calhoun for the grade 15 step, step 5 to grade 15 step 6 and back pay to January 1, 2023. Is there a motion?
Move. Move by Riappel. Second.
Second by Fetter. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 14, consider authorizing East Grand Forks Police Department to enter into five-year subscription for in-car and body cam equipment with services from WatchGuard Motorola starting at $24,580 for the first year and $18,986 for the next four years totaling of $100,524. Move. Move by Fetter.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 15, consider approving the request to declare 2002 Olympia ice resurfacer as surplus and prove the sale to Greenway Amateur Hockey Association. Move. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 16, consider authorizing the staff to enter an agreement between Betty Martin and Associates LLP for auditing services for the years of 2023 through 2025. Move. Moved. Mr. Fetter. Second. Mr. Helms, second. Good. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 17, consider adopting resolution number 23-09-56, firmly suspending the memorandum of understanding for resource, school resource officer services within the School District 595 until the statutory issue is adequately addressed. Is there a motion? Move. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions and discussion? Mr. Mayor.
Just have to make a couple of comments about this because it does pertain to some folks that are very important to us. We think of ourselves as an agricultural community up here, and in fact, we are. And yet our greatest resources are young people. And the greatest product we provide is young adults trained and prepared to build the future. Nationally, school shootings are at record highs in the past several years. In a recent study by the CDC, teen deaths by drug overdose more than doubled in a one-year span. Teen deaths by illegal fentanyl almost tripled in a one-year span. Does that sound like a good time to remove authority from police officers in the schools or to remove them from the schools entirely? Does that match with our objective of developing our youth in a positive way? We don't think so. But it seems that some in the Minnesota Legislature do. By taking away school resource officers' appropriate use of force, you tip the scales in favor of criminal activity. You take away the officer's ability to protect innocent people, and you increase the likelihood of kids making poor choices or being the victim of someone else's poor choices. In this legal environment, you literally remove school resource officers from the schools because the liability for the school, for the city, and for the individual officer is just too great. So what do we do about that? We're in a conversation with Chief Headland, City Administrator Huttinen, City Attorney Galstead, Council President Holstead, School Board Chair Base Flug, and School Administration. We have a plan. We recommend temporarily suspending the memorandum of understanding that establishes the school resource officer program between the city and ISD 595. When the Minnesota Legislature sees the negative outcome of its recent action and restores appropriate use of force to school resource officers, we will be able to reinstate the memorandum. This is a good time to consider what a school resource officer brings to education. They serve several important functions. SROs establish positive rapport with students from a young age. SROs hear of people who have criminal intent and can often help to straighten them out before they act. SROs partner with guidance counselors and other professionals to lead students in a favorable direction. SROs work with faculty, administration, and support staff of the school to glean their insights. SROs help train staff on emergency preparedness. SROs work with parents to help kids stay on the right road. SROs are a deterrent to criminal activity simply by being there. And SROs provide vital information if it comes to criminal prosecution. Our commitment to you is that our police presence in the schools will not decrease with this change. If the City Council approves the plan as it's recommended, the details are as follows. We will now have two primary officers dedicated to the schools. These officers will be scheduled on alternating days, making sure we have coverage every day. These officers will also patrol the two private schools, making sure that those kids have the same benefits. Now, even though these two officers are not employees of the schools and there is no contractual arrangement for the service they will provide, they will be available to participate in education, patrol the schools regularly, and immediately answer calls for help, the exact same way that they would if one of us called with an intruder in our home. And they will be able to continue with the appropriate use of force governed by our police department, the same as they always have been able to do. They will continue to do it in the exact same way. So I want to thank Chief Headland for helping guide through this process and all the others that have been part of it. And just know our commitment to our schools, to our kids, unwavering. Right? That's what we're going to do.
Larson? She have something? Okay. Yeah, I just want to maybe add on to that and let everybody know that, you know, as he said, we are still going to be a presence out there. And I do appreciate Chief Headland working out that logistics of who's doing what and where and what days. I think it's very important that the city knows. We all have either, A, students, children of our own, spouses, family members who work in these schools. I think they need to know, make sure that we are still going to do what we need to do, just as we're not going to be a contractual agreement with them doing what we do every day. So again, thank you, Chief Headland. And hopefully we can get a resolution down, down in St. Paul soon so they can change it. So anybody else have anything? If not, I'll do roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to 18 claims. Consider authorizing the City Administrator Clerk Treasurer to issue payment or recommend bills and payroll. Move. Helms. Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes. Motion is carried.
Mayor Gander? See you tomorrow at the EGF Showcase.
Mr. Fetter?
I don't have anything this week. Thank you.
Mr. Pakshavinsky?
Nothing. Thanks.
Mr. Riappel?
Nothing.
Mr. Helms?
No, thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Larson?
Nothing this week, thank you.
Anything from Hugh Reed?
Just a reminder that when we're done here, we'll meet downstairs for the budget discussion.
Mr. Holstead?
Nothing unless there's questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Just an update for the council, I guess, for those of you that have not been out there, the intersection of Vigeland and 13th. We did get everything completed last week that I guess we can complete until we, you know, until the contractor receives the parts that are missing. So still don't have a firm date yet to when those materials will be, you know, here. But, you know, I think once we get them, I would assume that there were probably less than a day at max to get that system up and running. But we were able to get the old system back in place last week. So we do at least have that crosswalk system in place for, for safety reasons. So I guess that's where we're at, unless anyone else has any questions for me.
Thank you, sir. Anything from the department heads? Not entertain a motion adjourned?
Move.
Move by Helms?
Second.